...presentation of the fire study. And the same four rules will apply and we'll ask Sheldon to go through the study. And then afterwards, we'll afford council time to ask questions and then we'll open up to the, to the public. So it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor, honorable councils. A pleasure for me to be here. My name is Sheldon Gilbert. I've had the pleasure of meeting most of you throughout this study period, but some of you I haven't. So I look forward to meeting and talking with you. So I have the task of taking a ten-month study and a two-hundred-page report and give you an overview in thirty minutes that's relevant and timely. And so I'm going to do my best to do that, but I'm going to do a thirty thousand-foot flyover and try to hit the major key points of the, of the project and the findings and the results. And then we can certainly dig in on any questions you might have. So I'm going to try to keep it at a minute a slide because I have quite a few, but there's a lot of good information that I think will help you as we, as we move forward. So this started about ten, eleven months ago when we, when we got the contract and we gave a large data request to the city and you forwarded us just about everything you had as it relates to your fire department. And we looked through that and we kind of coalesced that and looked for trends and then we came on site and we spent three days here looking and interviewing each shift, all the firefighters, the stakeholders, elected officials. We had a citizens forum to get some feedback. When you do these master plans, it's always good to see what the citizens' expectations are, how they align with the report, and are they aligned? And I'm, I'm happy to report back to you that they do. And I want to share with you real quickly that when we met with the citizens the first time we were here in this room, we asked them what their planning priorities were before we went into this with a brief understanding and explanation of your department. And they were very much in sync with where we ended up, that the technical competence and preparedness of your firefighters and their equipment and their facilities was of the utmost importance and that you, we maintain and/or improve response times. So that's a nice bell curve you like to hear from your community that aligns with the expectations and the mission of your fire department. The second thing we asked them is, is what are your service priorities? What's important to you that they do? Once again, a very nice dissection of what we'd like to see, that the fire suppression, the EMS, the technical rescue, and the core all-risk responses of your fire department were their priorities. Close, closely followed up by fire prevention, education, and emergency preparedness. And that's really, really important. And then they properly identified that there's some nice haves allowing the community service programs, public CPR classes and such. So their priorities aligned well with the fire administration and the policy of the council and the fire, fire department members. We asked them what they thought of their staffing levels and they basically, after being briefed and understanding what's going on, thought that there was the opportunity to be better staffed. We were asked to do this report in the context of doing an analysis regarding the National Fire Protection Association Professional Fire Standards seventeen-ten. That's the context for this report. And based on that, there are some staffing issues that can be resolved with some creative and innovative methods we're going to talk about. In addition to that, we asked them how they felt the responses were occurring. Did you, were we sending the right amount of equipment? Were we sending too much? Were we not sending enough? And they felt that you were sending an appropriate amount of equipment in a timely manner. So that's, that's very good feedback. We then asked them, what is your general impression not being fire or city budget experts on the cost of services? And the vast majority of them felt that the fire department needed to pursue a new fiscal tools. This in no shape, way, or form was a blank check or, or any sort of a movement to say raise taxes, but what it was is it was saying, hey, we understand that the cost of fire protection is going up. We understand that there's some additional needs in the city. See how you can do this better. Be innovative. Look at grants. Look at cooperative service. Look at different things that can help this go better and where necessary, look for additional revenue. The other thing we asked the community is, what do you think's a reasonable response time? And sixty-six percent of the respondents, there was about sixty that attended, agreed that it should be between four and six minutes. That is exactly in line with the national standard. And so these members of the community who were here that night were directly in line with what we measured against to see how we responded. We asked them what the strengths of your organization were, and they had a lot of great things to say about the Midwest, the city fire department. They had a training, bravery, professionalism, valued community resource, their fire prevention, passionate, caring, a lot of good things. Thought of very well in the community and had a lot of community support. As far as their expectations go, they want to make sure that they're properly staffed, they're properly trained, they have the right equipment, that they're basically measuring their outcomes and, and their performance using accurate data. We'll talk a little bit about that. They wanted to make sure that there was a staffed firefighting unit in every station. When we came and we did the initial study elements, Station One here was staffed with a squad, which was not a full pumper, meaning it didn't have water hose and a pump. That is subsequently, as part of this study early on, been corrected. So that was one of their concerns. The other concern was they wanted to maintain the six stations you have. And then they had a concern that the, that the demographics of the fire department don't reflect the community from a diversity perspective. So there's some recommendations in there around hiring and processing that'll allow you to address that for the future. Some of the concerns that they had are also relating to the expectations. They wanted to make sure you got the right resources, the right amount of personnel, that they're properly trained, that they're increasing their participation in the EMS system, that they're utilizing automatic and mutual aid with the surrounding communities where appropriate, such as Tinker and, and Dell City and the such. And there's areas for improvement there and I'll speak to those a little bit. And that we'd be creative with suppression personnel helping out with some of the fire prevention needs and the community education needs. And we've made some on that also. So we really looked at three things. In addition to getting the community feedback, we then went away, we started to write and compare data and analyze things. We had the privilege of working with an oversight committee, which we always request when we do these, these comprehensive studies, of which the mayor and the, and the local president and the fire chief and the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the administrative major, and I probably forgot somebody, but I think that was everybody that sat on our, our committee. And we spent countless hours reviewing our findings, our assumptions, our draft reports, to make sure that when you get this final report that we're presenting to you tonight, it's contextual, it's accurate, and it's sustainable. And that's, that's what we were able to do. So where are we now? We looked at ten key functions of your organization, how it's organized, your capital assets and your capital improvement, your stations and your equipment, staffing and personnel, service delivery, spent an extensive amount of time looking at how you provide service, where you provide it, and how's that going? The support programs to keep your fire department up and functioning, the history and formation, and the, the ordinances and the charter authority and the statutory authority that your fire department has, governance and lines of authority, the foundational policy documents that authorize your fire department and operate your fire department, the design of your organization and the span and control, do you have the right people in the right place, and a lot of extensive budget and finance analysis, both on what you're doing currently and if you do all these wonderful things, what does it look like? So here's some general observations and then we'll get into some specifics. You have a highly capable fire department. This is a strong, aggressive, committed group of individuals who are providing high levels of service to the community. They're well-equipped and they're well-trained. You've done a good job giving them what they need and they're well-trained to handle all risks. They are relatively new stations with some concerns over the location of a couple of those stations and recommendations that you might want to consider for the future. And everybody we talked to, all the way from the policymakers down, have a desire to meet the future challenges and meet industry best practices and be creative and innovative while you do it. So that's a great platform to work off of. So that's where we got the spring off of and started on this. So we first evaluated your current conditions and I'm just going to give you a couple of things here that we, that we found. On your facilities and your apparatus, I gave you a little bit of an overview. On your staffing and personnel management, we looked at your administration and your support. And we're going to talk in a little bit about some, some recommendations that you can do to help your administration and your support staff be a little more effective. This isn't something that is of urgent in nature and has to happen this year. The other thing that's important to keep in mind, this is a twenty-to-twenty-five year look. So the, the inclination is to see things in here that people think are really important and we need to make it happen in six months. You don't. The system demand, the, the demographics and the service delivery demands of the city are going to drive these changes, but it's going to be over a pretty large window. There's a lot of low-lying fruit that you can do immediately, but some of this stuff may not happen for ten, fifteen, twenty years, and that's okay. We wanted to give you a living document that gives you that kind of a, of a, of a look forward. Under staffing, we looked at your, your suppression staffing. And the first look we took was a global, national look. We looked at your region. We looked at the national, and then we looked at Midwest City as it relates to professional organizations of similar size and similar, and similar communities. And basically what we found is, is that the firefighter personnel per one-thousand population in your region is about one-point-five-one, in the, in the, in the, in the national median's one-point-three, and you guys are at one-three-four. This is a good place to be for a couple of reasons. One, you're surrounded by a big metropolitan city that has a lot more staffing. And so that's going to skew that number a little bit. But you are over the national median and you are, you are at a pretty good spot relating to your risk profile and how you can respond to emergencies currently. So I would not sit here today and say you have a staffing emergency by any means. You can meet most of those national standards almost today, but there's some things you can do to optimize. And that's what we're going to talk about. The other thing we wanted to look at is your history of your performance and look at your service demand, what your call volume is doing, resource distribution, which is geographically, are they in the right place? Then when we wanted to look at concentration, can you get the right number of units for the types of fires and emergencies you see on a regular basis? And then we wanted to look at the reliability. Is there any station that is in service on call so often somebody else is having to pick up their, their calls? And then overall, your response performance. And we looked at all that. This is a, a graphic representation of your, of your calls from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fifteen. And basically what I would call to your attention are a couple of things. One, you're seeing an incremental increase of one to two percent a year, and you had a drop-off that I can't define exactly why in two thousand and fifteen, but a very small drop-off. It is our expectation, your call volume will stay somewhat consistent and grow at one to two percent a year along with your population over the next twenty years. So the good news is you don't have any anticipated spikes where you're going to have a whole new thing happen here that's going to create a service demand that you can't meet with your, with your existing resources for a period of time. The types of calls that you're running is you're running about seventy-five percent EMS, you're running about three percent of your calls as fires, you're running about four percent for motor vehicle accidents, and then seventeen-point-four percent as other would-be alarm sounding service calls, whatever's left. I would say that the seventy-five percent for EMS is pretty consistent in suburban fire departments like yours, municipal fire departments like yours. Three-point-one percent of fires is, is a manageable, normal rate of fires for overall calls. The MVA, the motor vehicle accidents, is a little high. That is only because you run so many on the highway there, Highway forty. And so that is something that does tap your resources. The next thing we look at at a very high level, as we begin to lower our elevation, is we want to look at a heat map and see where your calls are occurring. And when you look at this map, you really only want to understand that these, these hotspots are where the majority of your fire and EMS calls are occurring. And when we look at this map, we just don't ever want to see a lot of those hotspots where you don't have resources. And that's not the case. Your calls are occurring where your resources are at. But you can see here that at Station One, they have a vast majority of medical and fires occurring here. So that when you shut this station, even though geographically you could cover around it, you can see where it was pulling and sucking in from these other areas. And it's kind of, do you expose your ankles or do you expose your hips? And so you were beginning to, to be exposed in these other jurisdictional areas because of what was happening here. So it was a good call to put that engine back in there with firefighting capabilities because you have a good degree of your fires in this area, also with high-density housing apartments and the such that have the greatest life risks. So, so that was a good call putting that back in service. So that was the second thing we looked at, at a fairly high level. A couple of other things that I would show you just from a educational perspective is this here is your city limits, and we have here the travel time that you can get to in four minutes. Four minutes is the travel time, the drive time from a fire station to meet that national standard. You are able to meet that national standard currently in the vast majority of your city with some areas in the southwest and, and this area here where you can't get, but there's not a lot of calls occurring. Then we transposed all your calls for the last five years into that area. And the yellow ones were longer than four minutes and the blue ones were a response time of less than four minutes. And what you came up with was a response time of over ninety-six percent in four minutes or less. I've never seen that. That's phenomenal. That is a really, really good response time. So you should be very glad that your first due unit, the red truck on the, in front of the red wet stuff, or the red truck on the, on the medical emergency is getting there within four minutes in the, in the high ninety percentile. The, the goal is at ninety. So distribution-wise, as far as your units, you're getting where you need to get. There's some growth that's going to occur out here. We're going to talk more about that. Now, getting the right number of units to a fire here, we're going to talk about in a few minutes. That's got a little different, different element to it. This here is just a map that shows a one-point-five-mile travel distance around your stations for an engine company, which is the normal response unit you see with the hose pump and a ladder. And then this is a two-point-five-mile radius for your ladder truck when it was located here. That ladder truck here served most of your mercantile and your three-story type buildings. It's been moved up to Station One now and it's, it's still serving the majority of those. But that just shows you that you've got a pretty good distribution for your pumpers and for your aerial ladder truck. This here is just another view of your actual travel time and performance and how many minutes it's taken you to get to, to where you need to be in, in areas of the city. All the light blue and the dark blue are well within the standard. The yellow can be within the standard. Anything below that, the brown and the red would be a problem. You don't really have any. So where you've got your response challenges on a first due response is going to be in these, in these outer areas. Now, I'm going to show you a couple of slides here and I'm going to ask you to kind of ignore them. And what, but, but I wanted to demonstrate what's going on here. Whoops, if I can get the right button. This is the national standard we compared you to. So for call processing time, that call should be processed and dispatched to the fire station within a minute, four seconds, or sixty-four seconds. We were not even able to obtain that data. That's not collected currently from your dispatch center. So that's an issue. We don't know what, what's happened. You don't own that dispatch center. But we don't be, we're not able to, to be able to tell you exactly what's happening as far as the call processing. So you'll see some recommendations in there about that. The next thing is called turnout time. That's the time the bell goes off in the fire station to when they're rolling down the street. And the, the standard is a minute, twenty seconds or eighty seconds for a fire and a minute or sixty seconds for EMS. What your data is showing you is that you were almost double the amount of time for a fire and three minutes to get out for an EMS call. I can promise you that's not happening. That's bad data. We, we went and we observed, we watched, and we can show from our GIS data that this is not the case. So I show this to you only to say, we got to get the dispatch data coming to the fire station and be able to, to put a pin on when people are arriving on the scene more accurately. Here's what's happening currently. I'm getting in the engine as a company officer. I'm telling dispatch, I'm en route to one-two-three First Street. They're saying, okay. And then whenever they get around to pressing the button, that's when it's timestamped. And if they're busy or distracted or see something else, it could be a significant delay. Sometimes they'll generate a call, wait a minute to dispatch us while they do something else. So there's things going on that are not inside your control that are impacting your data. And why this is so important is because we're going to say, this is the standard we believe you can meet and you need to adopt a standard. But if you can't measure against the standard, don't adopt it. You're just going to be frustrated. So we got to get this part fixed. So this part is your computer-aided dispatch system. This part is mobile data terminals or some sort of an electronic punch device in the, in the apparatus that the company officer hits so that it'll, it'll stamp a time. And it may even include some sort of automated dispatching system for the stations where it's not dependent on a person to say it. Lucution is a brand name, industry best practice. They hit the button, it creates a call, it electronically tells the station, you have a call at one-two-three First Street. Six seconds. So there's technology out there and one good place for you to focus is going to be on dispatch to the fire station and having the ability for the folks on the fire engines and trucks to hit a button and stamp their time. Then you'll be able to get real good data and determine how you're doing in relation to your standards. We looked at your support training programs and your fire prevention and life safety programs. We looked at code enforcement, fire and life safety, fire investigation, and then all of your training competencies also. So then we needed to look at where do you need to be. So since this is a twenty-to-twenty-five-year look, we wanted to make sure that we think, what's your city going to look like from a fire protection standpoint? So we looked at a number of things. One of the first things we looked at is we looked at three models for population growth. All of these have been referenced in some capacity by the city in the past. There's a point-three-eight percent population growth annually, a half a percent, and a one percent. Nobody believes it's going to be any greater than that given that you're fairly built out and this is infill development that's occurring. We chose to use the one because it gives us the greatest amount of insurance if we're going to make assumptions based on your service delivery. And it certainly is not a wildly aggressive prediction. So based on that, at one percent, over, over the next several years, twenty-thirty-five, you're going to be about a seventy thousand-person city where you were at fifty-four, fifty-five when we started. So that gives you some idea what's going to happen with that. The second thing we looked at is we wanted to look at the five primary risks your community faces and are you reasonably positioned to address those? And is there any major gap where we needed to throw a flag and say, whoa, you need to look at this. There's a big, big hole. And the five types of emergencies we looked at is first, we looked at all of your high-risk facilities. These are convalescent hospitals, hospitals, high-density housing, chemical and other facilities, rails, different things like that. Do you have a distribution of the resources and capability of resources to initially respond? Nobody's going to ask you to respond to the disaster and be staffed for that every day, but can you reasonably respond and begin initial mitigation actions? And the answer on that one is yes. You're, you're very well-positioned to respond to the hospitals and convalescent hospitals and factories and, and commercials and different things you have within your city limits. The second thing we looked at is your tornado history since nineteen fifty-five. And we looked at where have they gone or ran and through the city. And we basically said, okay, given a reasonable predictor, if this happens, one, can they do an initial response? The answer is yes, because these tend to be fairly isolated in a mile or less width. And then two, are they doing education and prevention programs as far as storm awareness and preparedness? And are their facilities prepared? And generally, the answer was yes. There's some recommendations there on some things you might want to consider with facilities and stuff in the future, but generally, this has been adequately addressed. The third condition we looked at was the potential, heaven forbid, for any sort of a plane incident as Tinker Air Force Base is right across the street. And you've got two main flight paths coming through on, on the west and then in the middle of town here. And we wanted to look at those. And we did find what we believe is a significant finding there. You have good initial response. You do not have mature, exercised, automatic and mutual aid agreements with Tinker Air Force Base that are practiced. And that fire department and your fire department need to get together on a regular basis and make sure they're absolutely dialed as to who has responsibility for what, when this, heaven forbid, ever happens. And what are they going to roll in and expect to do with their specialized equipment? What are you going to roll in and do with your emergency equipment? And what is the federal government going to do when they roll in with their equipment? So I think that's all stuff that you need to work on systems. That, that was a finding. There's some recommendations around that. We looked at floods. Generally, you have a flood risk down the middle of your city. The risk is it would be divided in two. We made sure you have water rescue capabilities on or around both sides by yourself, as well as automatic and mutual aid. Those are in place. We feel that's reasonably handled. The last thing we looked at is your urban wildland, urban interface threat. We looked at your ignition points and we rated your ignition point using the National Forest Service criteria within your city as well as outside your city. And you certainly have some ignition points in some urban interface areas. You have adequately distributed your wildland and your, your, your brush trucks and your equipment in such a way that you can, you can initiate a good initial response to a wildland fire. You also have good automatic and mutual aid with your neighbors who can also send that type of equipment. And you also have exercised the state mutual aid plan and can get help from the Forest Service for Oklahoma fairly quick. And so this is reasonably handled. We did have a talk with the Fire Prevention Bureau today, and we do feel there's some room to look at some prevention and mitigation programs that you may have not looked at. They do some basic education and training around fire-safe neighborhoods, but there's actually fire-wise programs that let you understand different ways to go about evacuation programs as well as building fire-resistant communities. Those are the types of things you might want to look at in the future, but from a response standpoint, you are, you are reasonably ready to go for that. So that was kind of the big picture stuff. Oh, my gosh, do we have any major issues? You are, you are pretty well-prepared. You probably scored a ninety-five for all the big stuff that could happen. And the five percent's pretty much around working with your neighbors better as far as mutual aid and automatic aid and practice.
Sheldon, on the mutual aid, not just with Tinker, but mutual aid in general.
Yeah.
Are there equipment deltas that we need to be addressed? That I learned that there's different hydrants, different hookups, and in order to facilitate adequate mutual aid with all of our surrounding communities, we need to identify those equipment issues and either purchase them or, or ensure that they're on the other truck.
Yes. You have a, a general, not severe, but a general deficit in your exercising, detail, and practicing with your mutual aid and automatic aid agreements. And you're going to see in a few minutes when I talk to you about building this response model around seventeen people for your day-to-day bread-and-butter house fire type of event. But if you have a strip mall fire or a mercantile fire or any of those big events I just talked about, there has to be interdependence between you, Dell City, Tinker, Oklahoma City, and others. And those have to be exercised and they have to be worded correctly and they have to be reciprocal. And there is room for improvement in that area and there are some recommendations in there about them. We looked at your, your workload over the next twenty, twenty-five years, and it's going to increase, we believe, very similar to what your population is going to increase. And it's not going to be any massive, oh, my gosh, we got to do something crazy this year. It's going to be that one to two percent a year. Your general percentages of EMS to fire, to other, to MVA are going to stay about the same. And so the good news is, the model you're building for today will probably still be generally the risk profile you're going to be dealing with in twenty-thirty-five, just with a one percent increase per year, give or take in volume. So that's, that's, that's a good thing. So how do we get there? So we made over sixty recommendations in the report that include, from one end of the department to the other, response deployment, administration, public education, training, data, EMS, emergency management, staffing, future fire station location, and continued strategic planning. That's an important one, and we'll talk more about this when we debrief with the team tomorrow. But this is a fifteen, twenty, twenty-five-year look. That's the target. You need to have a strategic plan that's a living document year-to-year. That's your arrow. And that's going to drive you through this plan incrementally that takes into account the budgetary realities, the political realities, the community realities, and any other realities that hit you on a year-to-year basis that we could not predict in this twenty-year view. And so that's going to be a really important aspect. So on response deployment standards, here's what we came up with, and I'll kind of talk you through it. We, we feel, first of all, you need to adopt some standard for all call types because you don't know how you're doing, if you don't know what the target is you're trying to hit. As I stated, if you can't measure it though, I would caution you against adopting it because you're just going to be chasing shadows. And should you eventually fix the problems, you may get a big, oh, my goodness, that you thought or didn't think you were doing or meeting those standards. So I would say, make sure you can report out against your standards. Make sure that you're gathering accurate time data. Your performance goals are, are measured in such a way and displayed in such a way that they're easy to understand, that the policymakers, the city management staff, and the departments can really make sure that this is what we're doing, this is what we're, we're heading for. And then staff changes to meet the emergency response force level. So there's a lot in here in the report, but basically what we tried to determine is, can you get seventeen personnel within eight minutes on a house fire anywhere in this community? And the answer is, for the most part, yes. However, you're going to have some problems down there on that peninsula that I talked about, getting them down there. And there are going to be some other areas where you have some challenges. So you're going to see in the report that what we recommended is, at some point, Station Five and Station Six are going to begin to have problems meeting their ninety percent goals depending on what you adopt because they're going to be pulled into that peninsula area as the population and the call volume increases. When that happens, and that becomes more than ten percent of the issue and you start having the rest of your city exposed, then we're going to recommend that you move Station Six down in the Westminster area and, and that you be able to, to move that one station down with the apparatus. And then at that point in time, consider putting one extra person on this, this engine once a day. And if you, one, you know, one more person a day for a minimum of four staffing. And with those two moves, there's nothing you can't do. We don't see you ever falling below ninety percent for first-in response as well as a first-alarm assignment for the twenty-five-year window. Now, we don't expect you to do that today. That fire station's a two-point-four million-dollar endeavor. By the time you buy the land and build it, it'd be a fifty-year asset. And it's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars to put another firefighter on this engine on a daily basis. You don't need to do it today because you don't have the volume down there in that peninsula. But as it grows and you measure these results that you adopt, you need to watch five and six really carefully because when one of them starts to struggle, it's probably time to make that move. Okay? So that's in the report and, and graphic representation with my interpretive dance there.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, before you move off that last slide.
Sure.
On, in the report, under response deployment.
Mm-hmm.
You, you mentioned that to place a second ladder in service at Station Two.
Oh, yes.
I realize that part of that argument is going to be that it doesn't require it to be an ISO, number one. But it seems to me that with all the high volume, we've got Autumn House, we've got hotels, convention center, box, box buildings down there, that it says in one of the recommendations, and I see you didn't list it, is to put.
I didn't list them all, yeah.
And that's.
Yeah.
You know, I had that highlighted as one that I.
That's great.
Personally, I think is critical.
Yeah, let me, let me talk you through it and, and give you the pros and cons of it. And, and I think you guys can, because it is, it is a recommendation that we made that you consider putting a, a second ladder down at Station Two. In that general area, you have a lot of mercantile, a lot of three-story, a lot of development that could opt. development that could operationally benefit from a ladder truck. The flip side of the coin is, that's a million-dollar piece of equipment versus a $500,000 piece of equipment when you go to buy it and bond it. The second thing you need to consider is, is you would not have a reserve, because you only have two. Now, that's not to say that you couldn't make that reserve and keep this one at all times and put an engine in there when needed, the small amount of time that it is out of service. The other thing you need to be aware of is there will be an ISO scoring impact when you put ladder trucks adjacent as it relates to staffing. Could it be overcome? I believe it can. You can have, you have options to work around that. But those are just things that the fire administration's going to have to perform some analysis on. But from an operational standpoint, just strictly throwing on my red hat and driving out the door to a fire, having two aerials, given your demographics and the building that's going on, and my understanding with some more commercial-type building and types of things going in, that would not be a bad thing to do. So that's generally...
If we turned a reserve truck into an active truck, it's not going to affect us negative other than we wouldn't have a reserve.
That affects your ISO scoring, and there's some adjacency issues with staffing, but I don't think, I don't want to overstate it. I don't think that's dramatic. And there are ways to accommodate that. For instance, you could simply say that if that, if this truck goes out of service, that one moves over here and we put something else over there for a period of time, an engine. There are also some alternatives in the ISO rating schedule, what's called a ladder tender, different ways to equip engines to be able to fill in for a truck. So there's ways to address it, but I'm just saying that you need to be aware of all those things. Maintenance costs are higher, purchase costs are higher, but it does give you capabilities you don't have. The other concern with running one ladder in the city is that when you run that ladder first out and you're first in, you're operating as an engine. You can't do truck operations, because you've got to get the wet stuff on the red stuff. So if you need aerial operations, you would have a second one to come in behind. So that's one of the benefits, too. So those are things you need to work through, but we did recommend that as a consideration.
So let me ask you a very pointed question.
Sure.
If you had the checkbook out, and you had your, you had two engines to buy here, or you had an engine and ladder to buy here, which one would you write the check for?
If I had, if I had the money and I could do either or?
Yes, sir.
I'd do an engine and a ladder. If I could do them both. However, I wouldn't do it at the expense of getting your CAD system right. I wouldn't do it at the expense of getting your data right.
Do what you noted.
Okay. Admin and financial. We basically looked at a lot of different things. There needs to be periodic review of your policies and procedures on a consistent basis so that they change with the time, the standards, best practices, and organizational dynamics. Reviewing your job task and your job descriptions, they need to be updated so that they're accurately reflecting what's happening. Taking a look at your hiring process to determine best candidates selected using national standards, using tests that have been tested against, that have been assessed against bias can help you with your diversity hiring. You need to do those kind of things. Establishing a wellness and fitness program for current members, annual physicals at the NFPA 1581 standard. This one is very near and dear to my heart, because when I was fire chief, we lost a young man to congenital heart on a call. And we got hammered really hard, because we didn't have our ducks in a row on this one. And not to mention, we lost a beautiful young man. So I would, I would say that that's really, really important, still the number-one killer of firefighters in America is heart attacks. And we need to make sure that they're getting proper, not only conditioning, but that we find congenital stuff early.
Threw it a couple of times, and I didn't see the explanation. Can you, the updates on the policies and procedures?
Yeah.
In the SOPs?
Yeah.
Is it, what do we need to do on, because that's not a fiscal deal, that's a...
No, that's administrative.
That should be, that's not the 15 or 25-year-down-the-road deal.
No, this would be some of the low-lying fruit that you could do quickly. So it is a good practice to look at every policy and procedure you have annually and just make sure it's relevant. Make sure that there's no new legislation or regulation that makes it either out of compliance or needs to change, that there isn't a department of financial or other dynamic that makes you have to do that. It's a lot of work, but what we have done and what other departments have done is they assign them out to individuals who are on duty or committees who are on duty, and they're able to look over these things. It doesn't have to be a 12-hour review or attorneys looking at it, but it's just looking at it for relevancy and consistency and currency. And that should be done, if they don't want to do it every year, every two years is better than nothing. But I think those are the types of things that that would represent.
Let me ask on the, on the annual physicals. You're suggesting that each firefighter should undergo an annual physical or based on their hire day throughout the year.
Yeah. NFPA 1581 is a comprehensive fitness-for-duty physical requirements that talks about the day you're hired, what you should have. It talks about your annual physical based on your age bracket. Those of us old guys over 40 and 50 get a few different tests than the kids who's 25 or 26. It's not off the chart, you're not doing full-body scans, but you are, you are doing screening for some cancers, which is presumptive. That's a risk-management issue. You're also doing some hearts, 12-lead treadmill tests for those of us over 40 and 50. And so, yeah, there's some things in there that will ensure that you have a fitness-for-duty release every year. The other side of the coin is, is you're going to find some stuff. And sometimes you get people that aren't fit for duty. And you have to have those policies and procedures in place on how to address that. Whether you discover diabetes, obesity, heart attack, or other things, you have to be prepared to address those.
Now, can those issues, under current standards, be mitigated and still remain on active duty if we do find them?
I never, and I'm just speaking from a fire chief perspective now. The six years I was fire chief of the Metropolitan Fire Department, we had some significant findings. Other than a severe cancer case, we never had anybody go off duty. We had diabetes that was managed, we had heart issues that was managed. Everything was able to be treated. Now, that's not to say you can't. I mean, you could have something really major found and that they can't return, but it was not a significant issue with our organization. Personal experience. And then establish a capital improvement replacement plan with a funding strategy. You have a city capital replacement process. You have some general replacement standards for your fire apparatus. They are not always funded for a lot of good and different reasons. And what that ends up doing is creating a operational emergency when you have one of those things go bad. So we just recommend as a best practice, if you can somehow find a way to put the funding away on an annual basis, you'll never have an emergency messing with your operations. So that's...
Stressed in the police deal, and it's called community involvement, but you, one of the recommendations you made is an advisory panel from the community.
Yeah.
Can you kind of explain what you're thinking about?
Well, in some instances where the community is very interactive with the fire department's operations, and I do consider this community to be one of that, there are some different forums and where you can have an advisory fire commission or an advisory fire committee that can just be your advocates in the city, that the fire chief and the administration can keep, and labor, can keep informed so that accurate information is flowing to and from the community. It's not a decision-making body. They don't have, in most cases, they don't have authority to approve, disapprove, or do anything, but they care about the fire service, and you can have a group that meets with them on a regular basis, and they can be your advocates in the community as you grow your system over the next 20 to 25 years. Okay? They can ask the hard questions. Fire prevention. So there were some core recommendations here that I think you need to know are pretty important. Probably first and foremost is your building department and your fire department are using different codes. That's a big deal. And currently, what we, what we are told is the standard is that you will go with the code that is the most lenient. That's going to be a major issue if that lenient code ends up being the cause of something that happens. Your fire department's using the 2015 ICC, your building department's using 2009. I would strongly encourage you to look at a way to bridge that gap and to make it easier, not only from a customer service standpoint, but from an inspector, plan review, and customer, customer service internally, too. So that's a big one. The second thing is, is your ability to get your building plans out. When we came here, you didn't have a fire protection engineer on staff. It was vacant, been vacant for six months. We recommended you fill that. We also recommended you train your inspectors to do some of the, some of the life safety basic reviews, which can help turn things around quickly for your customers and your community. Subsequently, did fill the fire protection engineer. You have, in the neighborhood, and chief, forgive me if I don't get the numbers exactly right, you have in the neighborhood of 1,800 mandated inspections in the city. Last year, you ticked off about 1,280 of them. Your goal is to get 100% compliance. We made some recommendations on way to do that. One of them was an additional inspector, but the other two were using engine companies to help with some of that. One really good approach is use it as a pre-fire planning opportunity, and maybe just have them look at the vacant buildings, because they care about that, because that's where the fires occur. Or, you know, or the other thing is self-inspection programs. There's many models throughout the nation. We recommend you take a look at some of those. So there's ways to do this where you can get your 100% inspections without spending a lot of money. Public education and community outreach, we think you need to take credit for what you're doing. There's not a dashboard really measuring how many people you're doing and what the outcomes of that are. I told them, if you've got, if you've got a safety car seat program and you certify or you install 1,000 car seats, it's worthy to report to the community that you had no deaths due to car seats, of children not being in car seats for the year. You need to, you need to let them know that that has value and continue to do that. And then, your public education officer position was open when we got here. It got pulled, it hasn't been filled. I understand there's some limitations. Whether it's a full-time public education officer or one of the, one of the Prevention Bureau staff now, they should be certified to the NFPA standard. It will help you with credibility, it will help you with risk and liability, and it'll help them provide better programs to the community. The training program, very important aspect, obviously very important to the community as well as your organization. A training advisory committee basically helps put together the annual training plan that submits to the chief for approval. It gets fingerprints on the plan. It gets your resident experts on different things involved to do the training and help plan the training. Developing further opportunities with your mutual aid partners, I touched on that a little bit. It's probably an area where you need to do a little bit more, having those opportunities to look at the equipment that the mayor brought up, understand the differences, and bridge those gaps through training and sharing of equipment and expertise. And then, tech, you have standard operating guidelines or policies or procedures, but we don't have records that you trained on them. And I'll tell you from personal experience, if you have a near miss or something that goes bad, they're not only going to want to know if you have the policy, they're going to say, that's great, show me how you trained them on it. So you want to make sure that your training correlates back to policies and procedures, which goes back to that training committee putting your annual plan together. Just some simple things that really will help you manage your risk more effectively in the future. Dispatch operations, call processing, and making sure you get that information from that dispatch center to your records management system and that it's accurate, and all the things we talked about. Emergency medical services. You contract with a local provider to provide your ALS ambulance transport. They seem to be doing a great job. Your crews work well with them when they get on the scene of an emergency, but you don't do much else with them. And so, we're proposing that your fire department be your eyes and ears with that ambulance provider and work more closely with them on critical calls, doing some analysis, some benchmarks, and performance data to see how they're doing in addition to how you're doing based on your adopted standards, and have a formal lessons-learned program that will help everybody be better. You've got people responding to calls on a daily basis, seeing unique things and learning valuable lessons that there's not a mechanism currently to share. And I'll give you an example. You had a crew respond to a call where they had some child abuse suspected, and they needed to get Child Protective Services involved. And they had to jump through a number of hoops, and they made that happen appropriately, and the child was taken care of. That's something that could be shared. Just a reminder, if you suspect elder or child abuse, here's the steps you need to take, and here's the people you need to call. That was a great learning opportunity. That should be shared with the other crews. So those are the type of things that I'm talking about there. Emergency operations staffing, we talked about that. Making sure you can get 17 personnel. I'm not concerned about you getting that first red truck on the scene in four to six minutes and doing what you need to do. Your goal, you're going to get, you're going to get the line in the door, and you're going to get the defibrillator on the patient until that area grows. It's when you need to get 17 there at once, you need to continue to monitor that as well as your EMS calls. And we talked about the solution for that with Station Six and a fourth person on this truck. And then, where you have higher-risk occupancies, you need 25 to 50 firefighters. You're never going to get to that staffing level, at least I highly doubt it, and I wouldn't recommend it. But you need to make sure you've got the mutual aid and automatic aid agreements in place so you can get them here in a timely manner. And once again, you're trained and ready to go. Future fire station construction, we talked about that. And then, the last thing I'm going to talk about, and then I'm going to let you guys ask questions, is there's five very, very detailed financial scenarios that you can look at in the proposal. And I just want to tell you this in general terms, because it always comes down to money. None of us like that, but that's a reality. And so, if you did nothing, and you just kept doing what you're doing today and proportionally assigning the same type of money into your fire fund with the growth that they're seeing and pay and benefits just through normal operations, you're going to see about a 3.95% increase in your budget annually, and you're going to cross in year three and be in deficit spending in the fire department. Okay? You guys are headed for a deficit here in the next three years, just doing what you're doing today. Then, if you do all this wonderful stuff we told you, and you were to increase, just do status quo and fully fund your capital replacement program and add some money to maintain the 5% reserve that's required by your ordinance, you should be looking at about a 5.9% increase. I'm talking annually, it's an average. But generally, a 5.9% average cumulative over the next five years. You can do that math, it's a lot. If you were to just throw out all care to the wind and put a fourth person on every company in the city and say, that's what we're going to do, we're going to have a 25 minimum staffing, you're looking at almost an 8% annual increase in the budget. If you were to add some extra administrative staff, we talked in the report about a deputy chief of operations, a fire inspector, and an analyst to help with all this data we're telling you to collect, that's about a 6% increase. And then, lastly, if you just were to move that station and spend $2.4 or $2.5 million in a couple of years, plus put those, that fourth firefighter on here, from the time you do that moving forward, you're going to have that one-year spike of $2.4 million you've got to find. But in addition to that operationally over, over the five-year period, your budget would go up about 6.9%. I only say that to say this is a monumental task, no matter what you do. And I know you're faced with costs on the police side. And so, I would encourage the council and the fire department and the, and the police department to work together to kind of put a holistic, omnibus approach together to what you can do with public safety and kind of view these things as a combined thing, because any one of them in a vacuum can be overwhelming. And this is a 20 to 25-year look. Nothing has to happen within two to three years, but you'll be able to see this develop over time, and you just need to be prepared to pay the price when that happens. So on that depressing note, I'll stop and let you ask me any questions you might have.
On the, I want to assure the people out here in the, in the audience, too, that, and I completely agree with you, that it's going to be a 20 to 25-year on some of the stuff.
Yep.
But the way I counted up the recommendations, and I've read, I've read this so many times that my eyes are burning.
Me, too.
Well, you can see all the tabs and stuff that highlighted. I counted 85 recommendations that you came up with, some of them that aren't listed there. 82 of them are non-fiscal.
Yes.
And they're, I personally can't live with the fact, if we're not providing and documenting the training, or not giving people, I know, I know the physicals are going to cost some money, but I couldn't live with myself if we didn't do something about the policies, the procedures, the mutual aid, and make sure that our guys have got every opportunity to have what they need at the fire scene before it happens versus us going back and second-guessing, well, I wish I had done that. And I don't think anybody on this council can afford to sit back and let 82 non-fiscal things just low-hanging fruit. But like I said, I've, I've looked at it, and I think that's, it's not a 20, 25-year look. year look, it's like, we're gonna start, hopefully, in a very short period of time, expecting some of this to change, because it's the safety of the firemen out there.
Yeah, that's, that's a very valid point, and, uh, a lot of these are very short-term, uh, administrative changes and just changing the way you do business. And then there's a few of them that are gonna be mid-range with some cost and some labor implications, and then a couple of them are just flat-out expensive that you gotta plan for. Um, but, but yeah, and, and I will say that throughout this whole report, your department's been making changes. Uh, they put this engine in service before we could get the ink dry on this thing. Uh, they, they, they hired a fire protection engineer. Um, they're doing a lot of different things to try to make a lot of these things happen, so, um, I would agree, and I think that strategic plan is that living document that's gonna drive you towards the, these things you can get done on an annual basis.
The one thing I take from the first conversation I had with Sheldon was, with the recommendations that he's gonna make is there's gonna be a lot of low-hanging fruit, as you call it. And he said, "If you guys can't do the low-hanging fruit, you're not gonna be able to do the, the heavy stuff later on down the road, and this will be a waste of time." So, I think it's time for us to pull up our sleeves and do the low-hanging fruit, as you call it.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good perspective, sir, thanks. Yeah, I think if you, if you do the stuff that's in front of you that doesn't cost a lot, that you can just make happen, um, it'll set the foundation, it creates the working environment, and it creates the relationships when you do the hard stuff. The other thing I did put in here that I didn't put on the recommendation is, you have a very, very involved, educated, and very competent local union for your firefighters. And they've been intimately involved in this and, and helping us do a good job. And I put together, or we put together, a pretty extensive labor management collaborative process in here, that when it comes to updating these policies and doing the administrative stuff even, there's a collaborative way to do this in such a way that everybody has fingerprints on it, and you don't miss stuff. Because fire chiefs, even with our best intentions, writing a policy in a vacuum, we're gonna, it, this doesn't translate when you gotta go out and do it. And so, I would highly encourage, and I know the chief's already working on it, uh, on, on finding ways to use committees and to use this labor management collaboration process to keep fingerprints on this, keep the communication and dialogue open, um, and there won't be any surprises, and you can build a strong foundation.
Any further questions from the council? Are there any members of the audience that would like to address the counselor, or Sheldon?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Which? Oh, yeah, um, I, I would probably, um, do, I would probably shoot for the status quo with adequate capital funding, and funding so you could have a reserve if something happens. That would be my short term, with some, some mid- and long-range planning on when do we think five and six are gonna struggle, and start looking at how can we do funding maybe, I don't know how many years it'll take, depends on the development, but whether it's five, ten, or fifteen, to start looking at how do we get funding for a fire station, what, what location do we want it to be, those kinda things. So, that, that's what I would do. I'd, I'd do the status quo with capital funding and with the funding to maintain a reserve and, and cover your expenses the next five years. Yeah. Yeah, um, I, I wouldn't, there's not people or buildings, there's, there's calls, and their inability to hit their standards, because those buildings out there are gonna create much less of a fire risk than your old homes here, because they're all gonna be sprinkler and they don't burn. So, you probably don't need to have a really strong fire response out there on a day-to-day basis, as long as you can get the first unit there in four minutes, because it's probably gonna be a sprinkler flowing with some water on the ground. But you do wanna watch that ninety percent goal, and when you can't hit it anymore, that's when it's time. But I think it'll be several years. Thank you.
Are there any other, uh, discussion from the, uh, audience?
Yes, sir.
It should be on the website. These, these documents are available on the, on our website, uh, and, uh, in, in full text, so. Yes, chief?
Uh, we're just gonna end in closing, there's not any more questions, that, you know, you can see from the onset that, you know, the fire department is very good staff, and they do very good with what little that we have. We've always been able to adapt and overcome. It's been a learning process for us going through this with everyone that's been involved. Um, you know, we have learned, and out of all the recommendations, there are a lot of changes that need to take place, uh, that aren't anything that, that fiscal, uh, responsibilities. You know, unfortunate, there are some that are fiscal responsibilities that are very expensive. You know, and we spent a little bit of time, especially with the, the documentation and the tracking, and just as what, um, you know, Mr. Ashley was asking about, how do we get, how do we plot if Station Six needs something, it's not just by population but by call volume, that a lot of this stuff is gonna be driven to and towards document capturing, uh, technology in, in reference with the CAD system. You know, and I would say that that's probably one of the first, most expensive tools and assets that we're gonna have to figure out a way to get that does that, and then the rest of that will, you know, fall in line, as you looked at and saw where Sheldon's group and picked out with the GIS, and, you know, we've worked with our own GIS department and realized that we're at, we are able to meet those drive-time needs, but we're not, we don't have a way of capturing what we think we're capturing shows that we're not doing it at all. And, um, you know, that's just, you could make it to, um, those, the eight-minute response on some of those and seven minutes for the others, we're just, you know, we know that those aren't happening. Uh, we just gotta figure out the correct and actual way to capture that data. And we've just tried over time with physical before we took over, uh, responsibilities from the ladder went the CAD system, they just did with what they had to piecemeal some parts together, and so, um, you know, it's gonna be a, a work in progress for us. You know, there's no doubt that everyone there will be able to adapt and overcome. You know, I do wanna thank the mayor and for, uh, you know, we worked side-by-side with him and President Bebaut, uh, Guy and Tim to do, uh, and then, uh, Daniel Heron and David and myself to work with the project oversight committee to make sure that what we're capturing and how we're doing is tracking, because at the same time, when we capture this data, we do have an ISO rating coming forth, and we use the same data to give to them to do the ISO, uh, grading as well. So, this has been a beneficial learning, uh, given us a roadmap for some ways to lay forward, we're looking forward to that, and as well as preparing us for our next venture with ISO again, so.
Chief, please don't take our questions as any criticism, because you guys got excellent group of people working the police and fire. The thing that concerns me is that it's some, we're gonna have to do something with this study, we've got to.
Correct.
Because at some point in the very near future, we're probably gonna be reaching out to the citizens for some help. And the only way that we can go to them and ask for help is to say that we did this, we saw our deficiencies, we're trying to correct them, because if we're, if we do nothing, we're not gonna get any help from anybody, so.
Sure.
And you, and I, I commit, well, I'll support you and your guys any way I can, but there's, there's some things in there that, as you've read through it, that have to be corrected.
And one thing, just to put your mind at ease, we, we have contract negotiations to do in the labor contract to do five-year, four-year, and three-year physicals. They're based on your age, we don't do annuals, we should be doing annuals as well, those are gonna come with a, a cost as well, but we do hit those benchmarks according to your age, you do get a, a five-year, three-year, or four-year physical as well, right now already, so there are some room for improvement as well on that, so.
Well, I'd just like to say, thank the fire department, um, we really do care about you, we want the best for you, and I personally wanna thank you all for all the work you've been doing in, in the communities. I see you out there, I, they talk about you, they say positive things, and they've been routing, rooting for you, and I said, "Well, we, we trying to do all we can." And I think this study gives us, uh, some clarity and some knowledge about things we need to implement, that we all need to work on, so, thank you very much for the work you do.
Would like to mention that as part of this process, Sheldon and the chief, um, uh, have met with all three shifts and made a, I guess, similar presentation, Sheldon? And you got one more tomorrow. So, um, that, that I think is a, is a significant effort to try to get the information out